Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting of September 11, 2017. At this moment, I would like to take a moment to -- of silence in memory of 9/11. Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, public participation.
I do not believe that anyone has signed it for Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to the approval of the minutes. I'll adjourn to motion to approve the regular board minutes of August 14, 2017.
So moved?
Moved second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Our next object -- item on the agenda is a proclamation for PAWS. I'm just going to -- I'm going to read through it and do the entire proclamation at this point. The Protection of Animals in Wakefield Society, Inc., PAWS, was founded in September 1982 by the late Esther Knoll, renowned animal rights activist. And whereas PAWS' mission is to promote and protect the rights and well-being of all domestic animals and wildlife, as well as foster a greater understanding of animal welfare and animal rights through education. And whereas since 1982, PAWS has served over 12,500 local cats, dogs, guinea pigs, birds, and other animals in need, providing food, shelter, medical care, and foster homes until forever homes could be found. And whereas PAWS continues to serve the greater Wakefield community through the operating of a humane response line which helps link the public to critical information regarding the solutions for animal-related questions and issues, including adoption, rehoming, behavioral issues, finding vet care, lost and found information, and more. Whereas PAWS sponsors educational programs, including the presentation of the wonders of animal life to all 5th grade Wakefield students, and provides all K-6th grade classrooms with annual subscriptions to Kind News, a newspaper teaching humane values. And whereas in this 2017-2018 fiscal year, PAWS celebrates its 35-year anniversary as well as the 100th anniversary of the birth of Esther Knoll. And whereas PAWS currently celebrates the grand opening of its new office space at 411 Lowell Street, Wakefield, Mass. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Wakefield, in meeting assembled on September 11, 2017, declared Saturday, October 14, 2017, as PAWS' Day in Wakefield. Paul Ardenaro. At that, let's move on to licensing and permits. One-day liquor license request for the Wakefield Rowery Club for Taste of Autumn on Friday, November 10, 2017, from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at the Crystal Community Club.
So moved?
Second. Moving second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearings, we have a 7:10, so we have five minutes before that can be taken. So let's schedule the public hearing for alterations of the premises to the alcohol license for Cafe Italia at 2123 Water Street for October 16, 2017, at 7:10 p.m. Move?
So moved.
Moving second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Appointments. Let's go on to that. Albion Culture Exchange Committee, appointment of two. John D. Natale, 65 Plymouth Road, term through April 30, 2017. Nicholas Attwater, 48 Miriam Street, term through April 30, 2017. Do we have a motion for the slate?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Keep going, yeah.
Request for -- from Janet Baptista to donate a bench to be installed at the Dog Park.
So moved.
We have a motion.
(laughing).
You could have rushed that one out, I know. We have a motion.
Seconded.
Seconded, thank you.
I was waiting all week for that.
All in favor? Discussion?
National bench that was already dedicated or donated by WCAT. It'll be the standard bench for those.
Standard bench.
And we hope to have two more also.
Is that a request?
Perfectly placed, to the left, as you want.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's move down to D, please, right now. Set the date for the regular town meeting, November 6, 2017. Any other motion?
So moved.
Moved seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much.
Can you please remind me what time that starts the town meeting?
Town meeting starts at?
6:00 and 7:00.
Seven.
Seven, okay. Thank you.
Some of us get there at 6:00 to listen to the music.
Exactly.
Okay.
Let's -- I need a -- open the warrant for November regular town meeting. Motion, please.
So moved.
Motion seconded.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Close the warrant for November regular town meeting, October 5, 2017, at 4:30 p.m.
So moved.
Moved seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
(inaudible).
Yep. Request for Lucius B. B. Memorial Library to accept and expend the gift or gifts to the library in the amount of $1,292.70 from various donors with thanks.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
I think you're right.
I think that's it?
Yeah.
We can roll right in time?
Yeah.
Good. Okay, so it is close enough to 7:10 that we can open up the public hearing. I need to do a roll. I need a roll vote on -- I need a motion first, open the public hearing for the transfer of liquor license to Mara LLC, DBA, Four Points by Sherwin, Wakefield. Motion?
Move.
Move.
Second. Roll call.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Merrill?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Please introduce.
Yes, this is Chanelle Mansfield. She's our food and beverage manager. Name would be under Mara. She'd be the operating manager.
Thank you very much. Do we have any?
Well, I think this is -- nothing here is going to change. This really is to clean up the whole license for the ABCC, what they've requested. The manager has been fingerprinted. Everyone has been fingerprinted, so that's all set. This is really to make sure that all our paperwork is in order with the ABCC. There's been no issues there since it's been working.
So on our end, everything's okay?
Yeah.
Excellent. So then, any questions from the board regarding this?
Public.
Anything from the public? Questions from the public? Hearing none. All adjourned. Yes, good.
Tell me about your experience in the hospitality business.
For me?
Yes.
Sure. Well, I've been at the Four Points Hotel, which was originally Sherwin Colonial, for 11 years, and I've done numerous roles there, being the food and beverage manager. I oversee the restaurant and the banquets and run the events, and it's fabulous. I love it. I love being in Wakefield. We do a lot of business with Wakefield and other groups, and yeah.
Would you start off? Tell us about some of your positions you held.
I've done almost every position there. I started off as a server in the restaurant. I have bartended. I have banquet served. I have worked at the front desk. I've worked as a cook. I've done all those stations, you name it, I've done it. And I just kind of like moved up in the world and just learned, and Steve has shown me a lot, and I just really love what I do, and I love just taking care of the guests and supporting Wakefield as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. You're very welcome.
Any other comments? I'll adjourn to motion then to approve the transfer of the liquor license to Mara, DBA Four Points by Sherwin.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Seconded.
Move seconded. Roll call.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. We are now going to go to presentation, Act 9, Item B, Cemetery Rates, Rules and Regulations and Recommendations. Mr. Spencer.
You have before you the cemetery rates and the cemetery booklet, and as it's mentioned in the memo, Board of Selectmen is the cemetery commission, as we do not have a cemetery commission. And in the past, the Board of Selectmen, or previously the Board of Public Works, now the Board of Selectmen, has set the rates for the cemetery. We have two cemeteries, and one is obviously historical and closed, and the other one is at -- on Lowell Street in Forest Glade Cemetery. The last time the rates were increased were in 2006, so it's been 11 years since they were increased. Regulations were last revised in 1993, so it's been quite a while since we've looked at those. Important note, when we -- I go through the cemetery rates, the cemetery rates do not pay for the cost of the operation, okay? Give you an example, our budget, not counting any capital that might get approved during the course of a year, is around $301,000, and we took in -- or what we appropriated towards the rates this year for -- through seal of lots and graves, or through perpetual care, was $73,500. And on top of that, you add another approximately $78,000 in other fees, so we're up around $150,000 that we bring in to offset the cost of the cemetery. The fees have never been in the past, not that they couldn't be, but they've never been set to cover the full cost of the cemetery. And that's a position that both the Board of Public Works and the previous Board of Selectmen took, but that's obviously up to you. One of the things we did look at when we did the rates, we did a survey of other communities. We also did a cost analysis of what it really costs when someone buys that grave -- gravesite. And the cost in the survey, and these are both private and public cemeteries, they go anywheres from 300 -- where is it? I'm sorry, let me see here. $450 up to $8,000, depending on where you go. Some comparisons, Bedford is $480, Belmont's $4,000 to $8,000. The Chelmsford's $800, Danvus is $1,100, which is private. Holyhood is $2,000 to $6,000, that's private. Lakeside is $2,000, which is in Wakefield. Then you get to -- Melrose is $1,900, Saugus is $1,250, Stonem is $1,500 to $1,600, so it gives you an idea that there's a big range there of cost. The other thing that we looked at was what does the -- is the cost of that piece of property? And so we went through and took the average cost of a home, and we started working on this last year in July in that area, and then divided out that amount of square footage that would be appropriate to that cost. We added in the development costs, the paving costs for those sections, pipe material for irrigation or for the watering lines, the inspection on the project. To come up with a cost, and the cost that we came up with for that, just the gravesite, not all the other things that go into it, is $885. We recommended at -- to the advisory board last year, $900. They ended up voting on the $800 you'll see on the chart I provided you. Some of the other things we did a comparison of, we looked at the grave opening and closing cost, which runs about $470 at current cost. And so then we kind of sat down and went to what you see. We looked at winter costs, which is a small item. So the rate sheet you have here eliminates some items because they're no longer needed. The grave purchase recommended is 800 from 500. Perpetual care would be 500 from 300. Grave opening would stay at 500. Saturday and holiday openings is 275, that stays the same. The baby grave section would be 400 from 125. The other increase, there is a new item here for, which we did not have a cost before, for the Saturday holiday opening, which involves overtime for baby graves, is 275. And we also created a cremation garden section. Currently, and I gave you a plan on that to show you what we're going to build out in the future. Right now, if you wanted to do a cremation, you would buy a full grave, and so that would handle about four cremations, but that's the only thing that would go in there. The cremation garden section, which is in on the left when you go by the buildings, would be just for cremations, and you'll see a cost section there for those areas. The red items are all new on the sheet I gave you, and with that, I think any questions you have, I'll be glad to try to answer.
Members of the board?
One question.
Again?
The largest increase you mentioned was for baby grave, for 2 and under, from 125 to 400. Can you just explain that big jump as opposed to like the 500 to 800, I understand?
Okay. The baby grave from 125 to 400 is actually taking up the same amount of grave space as a full grave, but we did not go to the $800.
Makes sense.
Okay?
Thank you.
So if I heard you correctly, you're currently generating what, $150,000 in fees?
Correct.
How much more additional residue you participate with this?
You know, I didn't calculate that out, but we will -- we can do between, and let me see here, between 300 -- or between 75 and 100 sales a year. So if you take $300 times that, times 100, you're picking up another $30,000. If you -- the other cost items, and a lot of them didn't go up, cremation garden section would be a big cost, and would bring in some revenue there to help offset the cost, but also not waste space that can be used for full-size graves.
I'd like to narrow that gap, you know, in the red, so.
Yeah.
Closest to the line.
The, you know, I think at the end of the day, we're probably looking at maybe picking up another $50,000 to $100,000, so we're still going to be short.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Comments from the -- nope, nope, not this one. We have a motion then?
Yep.
I mean, a motion then to approve the recommendations as set forth for the cemetery rates and rules by Mr. Spencer.
So moved.
Seconded. Moved seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Stay right there.
Stay right there, Mr. Spencer. Mr. Reeves, could you please take the seat at the table? I'm excited to complete streets.
Can I do one other thing? So you know, and I forgot to mention this, our intention is that we notify funeral homes and stuff with appropriate amount of time. So these, we would not implement these until October 15. So I don't know if you want to make that part of your motion, or if that's just --
Yeah, we do.
-- with that.
So amend it?
Add it.
Sure, I would amend the motion we've previously made that the cemetery rates and new fees don't go into effect until October 15, 2017. Forest Glade.
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Complete streets presentation.
Yes, Mr. Reeves, I don't. Complete streets is a catchphrase that you've probably heard. If not, it's a little ambiguous about what it might mean. What it simply means is streets that are usable by all, streets that everyone can use. Complete streets is a simple idea, and I think everyone in the public would find it something, but surprisingly, transportation engineers are finding it to be a dramatic shift in what they do and how they think about streets and right-ofways. And how can we use MassDOT's Complete Streets program, and how does it relate to Wakefield? And how does it relate to our previous planning upper projects and the planning we've been When you look at this photograph, it's Wakefield downtown. It's probably a little hard to imagine that Wakefield's downtown was built before cars, was built before traffic, and before we had parking issues. Wakefield was a horse-and-buggy town. All the right-ofways, all the streets were designed for horses and horse-drawn carriages. And what that did is it made Wakefield a very compact, dense community, if you compare that to some of the suburbs that you see being built out on the periphery of Boston. The mode of transportation with a horse-drawn carriage meant that if you wanted to go somewhere, you had to go to your barn, hitch up the horse, and go through all that effort of caring for the horse and the time it took to hitch it up. And so most people would say, forget that, I'm just going to walk. And so you would walk to more convenient locations. And we had the opportunity with the commuter rail. We took advantage of this walkability and the density to talk about having developments in Wakefield that are close to the downtown or in the downtown that are housing, similar to the one we just looked at at 316 Main, which is a former farmhouse. And when you look at Wakefield in 1932, this is right after the Model Ts that were coming out in 1927, Wakefield, there are photographs of Wakefield with horses and buggies on the street, but in 1932, the car had taken over by that time. And we have softened that street with, you know, adding the island in the middle and making it a more desirable place for landscaping, and added that. And when we worked with MIPC, their engineers were primarily trained at MIT and the local schools, and bike paths and cycling was the important subject that they learned about. So when we did our Main Street corridor study, in a way, it's kind of disappointing, but a lot of the effort there that they put in was focused toward cycling. And so when they looked at Main Street, they said that the most appropriate place to put a bicycle lane would be right beside the green space in the middle. It's the safest place. And so a cyclist would end up, you know, right there in the middle of the road. And, you know, if they didn't bump into a rock or something, you know, we'd be okay with that, because that is a very busy street. And another planning effort followed because the CDC, from 1910 to, I mean, from 2010 to 2014, really focused on late onset diabetes and getting people out and walking. And so the whole effort about healthy communities and walking was very prevalent. We capitalized on at least three or four studies that we did, and implemented a change in our zoning, so that we encouraged more walking from our commuter rail station. We used that as our rationale that developments that are in the commercial zone within 2,500 feet of the commuter rail station, we get a bonus and an opportunity to use their sites for housing over retail. And as a result, we have 175 North Ave being built with 60 units. We have 5 Bennett Street, which has been approved with 32 units. We have 460 Main Street down in the junction, which is an eight-unit project. Foundry Streets, looking at 83 units. And then 2737 Water Street is even being converted to residential. So the implementation is paying off of that zoning change. We've looked at housing opportunities in our housing plan, trying to think of ways to get housing over retail on Albion Street, and we've done the housing plan focused on that in the Albion Street corridor. When you look at Albion Street, this is what it looked like in 1902. The rail lines went in in 1902. We were -- Wakefield was a streetcar hub. There was a streetcar line that went to Stonem, Melrose, Redding, and even over to Saugus. The right-ofway between these buildings hasn't changed. The building on the right is still there, it's been reclad, that's the Joy Taylor's. The shoe shop is in the building in the back, and you can see that the space in the middle there, the gap, is now where the light department building sits. I'm going to digress for a minute, just to give you kind of a global view of what transportation planning was about and why it was a dramatic shift with complete streets. This is Mulberry Street in Little Italy, in New York, and it's before cars, and this is a famous postcard from like 1900. And the -- this is the street in Fifth Avenue in New York, and it's, you know, two lanes each way, but it's carriages with parking on the side, not cars. So this is how our streets and our communities, older communities, were laid out. They were laid out for carriages. Look at the size of the buildings that were built, even with just using horses. And there was a lot of congestion. Pedestrians were able to just walk into the street, get across the street. Then, as cars came in, well, bicycles preceded cars. And bicycles were first introduced about 1817. They had tricycles, quadricycles up to 1850. 1850 was when you had the high-wheel bicycles, and then they evolved to about 1890 into the safety bicycle, which had a chain-propelled rear wheel. eighteen ninety into the safety bicycle, which had a chain-propelled rear wheel, which made the front wheel operable, so you could steer with that, and it was actually a safer bicycle. And so by eighteen ninety, it was a bicycle craze. Everybody was buying bicycles. So, and then the car, you know, evolved. It came in as a more enhanced mechanical device. And that started being most popular about nineteen oh-three, with Henry Ford first producing the production line in our country, the Model A, and then the Model T came in nineteen twenty-seven. And in that period is when the transportation engineers sort of took over, and pedestrians had to back up. They couldn't cross the street. If you crossed the street at an inappropriate time, you were jaywalking. The transportation engineers looked at traffic speed, lanes, everything like that. So the pedestrian and everybody that didn't drive was sort of pushed out of the street and not able to use the public way. So why am I telling you this? Why am I spending your time on this? Because I'm trying to emphasize that bicycles have precedent in law. They came here first. Mass General Law, Chapter eighty-five, Section eleven B, says that a bicycle has a right to the public way, except for limited access, freeways and facilities like that, or like a pedestrian mall in some cases. But that's important to know, and that bicycles and cyclists have a right to use our roads. And the ADA Act, well, what's actually known as the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, first introduced the Americans with Disabilities philosophy. And as that evolved, a lot of constituencies came forward, and said there's a lot of other people that are excluded from having the right to the public way. And they all have their own lobbying groups, they all have their own webpages, their own attitudes toward how they should be able to use the streets, not just the cyclists. So if you look at AARP's statistics, there's nine percent of American households still don't have a car, but there's a lot of people that don't drive, and there's a lot of people that shouldn't be driving, really. If you're a senior, if you can't drive, you can't get to the doctor, you can't get to the grocery store, you've got a real problem. So the AARP has a livability score. They look at communities now, they rate them, and those communities are trying to emphasize that they are a livable place, they have open spaces, they have parks that people can walk to. You've heard of our walkability scores. So all these groups have pushed for complete streets, as it's called. And Massachusetts first adopted that in nineteen ninety-six. State Representative from a portion of Belmont and Cambridge inserted into a bill, a section of Massachusetts law, requiring that all streets be examined so that they can be usable by all. And then, more recently, in two thousand fourteen, a special act was introduced with the Bond Bill to put in actual, the naming of the Complete Streets program for Massachusetts. So even the National Association of Realtors, all sorts of groups say that our streets should be more usable and more walkable. So this is a diagram that's on the website and available from a group called Smart Growth America, and they're a consortium of a lot of other lobbying groups for changing our streets. And what you will see when we look into complete streets, we're adding bumpouts, we're adding things that make streets safer for people. It's not so much that we're trying to remove the cars, we're trying to make it safe for everyone. And cycling is a real difficult problem, because that usually requires cycling lanes. This is an early project that was done in two thousand and seven in New York City. This is actually Ninth Avenue between Sixteenth and Twenty-third Streets, that was redone as a complete street. And you can see that it was as a cycling lane. Pedestrians probably have a struggle getting across the cycling lane now. But this is sort of held out as the model of what bigger communities are able to do. Communities like Somerville and Cambridge are striving to do that. There is an analysis process in complete streets called contextual analysis. If you look at your right-of-way and it doesn't work for you, you can back up and do what's reasonable for you. But by voting to accept this policy, you will allow us to enter a program to study complete streets, obtain a small grant from the state right-of-way, fifty thousand dollars approximately, to have an engineering firm look at our streets. Mr. Stinson has a number of gaps and sidewalks that could be possibly addressed. The downtown, that two thousand five hundred-foot radius, Albion Street, they could be looked at of what could be done. And then eventually, after that next stage, we would go in and ask for four hundred thousand dollars in capital improvement money. The difficulty is that we have to pay for the engineering work at that point, for designing that street, that four hundred thousand dollars worth of improvements. That's our only cost to us. But at any point, we can stop. We can stop after the first tier, which we are in now. We can stop at the second tier, when we get the fifty thousand dollars and do the study of the town. Or we can go ahead and go to the third tier, which is acquiring the, doing the plans, and then building the improvements, and then seeking reimbursement of four hundred thousand dollars from the state. That's what I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments? Comments from members of the board?
Ed. I'd just like to say that, first off, thank you both for being involved with this. I think this is an incredible opportunity for our town. The timing can be better, as we were talking so much about ways in which we can have this cohesive vision for the downtown, streetscapes, walkability. It couldn't, we couldn't have a better timing of this. And we're talking about a lot of available money here, which I think is always a great opportunity for us as a town. So I strongly support this. I support the efforts. I think that it's the direction we need to go in. We need to really have that downtown pop, and that's going to pop by doing a lot of these things together. And I know we have a lot of moving parts, and that's a great thing, you know? And I think this is the time we can bring all this together and make this happen. So I think this is great work. I know you both are, I guess, considered certified at this point, or?
No, we have to submit.
Certified, that process is ongoing, but I think that this is a great opportunity.
We would need a vote by the selectmen to submit that application and sign the policy statement.
Yeah, if I could, just to comment on what you said, important to note that it's not just downtown. This impacts all five hundred and fifty streets in Wakefield, whether private or public. And the, you want to look at the last paragraph, because you need to know that when you go into this. That last paragraph says that when you go to do other projects, it may, and it may not, a lot of that cost will all be on the town in the future. It could cost more of a design, it can delay projects and extend them out, and it will introduce things that normally we have not done. So you have to be aware of that, and, not that they're not good, but there is some cons to that whole process, too. So you want to keep that in the back of your mind when you, if you enter into this tonight, you know? And we're both in support of it, but there's also that piece there that will impact other stuff, okay?
It does sound like, as I was describing, we go along, and then at some point, we find it's not working or not meeting our interests, then we can discontinue our engagement, right? So we have that as we go along in the process.
Yeah, but it may impact you from other grants in the future. It won't impact Chapter ninety yet, I shouldn't say that, in the future, who knows? But it may impact other grants that you would look to try and do, if you were to get on.
This is actually the new policy from the state. They have a big manual of state highway design standards. It's referenced in the policy statement. It was adopted in two thousand six, I believe. They spent almost ten years looking at the revision to it, and there is that contextual analysis. And that's our safe harbor if we can't do something. But we can go to that, I think.
And just like looking at other communities, too, I've noticed there's been a real push for this. I think especially with, I guess, bike slash running lanes, where you'll see like a side, where it used to be the bike lane was kind of next to the cars, you'll see like a sidewalk, then like a two-way bike lane, then parked cars, then the driving cars, and then parked cars again. So I imagine that's...
If you can separate the bicycles from the cars, you're, it's important to do that.
It seems like it's really a trend that I've picked up on in a lot of other, you know, places of that, seeing you doing that in the last two years, even, I've noticed a lot of that.
Wakefield, that would be extremely difficult because of the narrowness of the roads. I don't know of one road where you could do that. If you, unless you wanted to lose parking, then you could possibly do that. That's why on, when you look at the bike lane we put around the lake a few years ago, that's a shallow lane, that's not a dedicated bike lane. So cars can drive in that, bikes can drive in that. It's really to bring awareness, and that's because there's not enough width to accommodate what you mentioned.
Any other members of the board?
So I, this is great, I'm really excited. This is something I've talked about for a while. I'm looking, I'm just wondering how set in stone this working group is. I think it's great, and I think it potentially could talk about some of the issues, Paul, that you mentioned. So we talked about obesity and the crisis there, maybe putting someone from the Board of Health on here, or someone from Rail to Trails, who's like a biker from that point of view. You know, a lot of the pictures you showed, moms and dads and parents with strollers, and somebody just coming at it not from that, like another point of view. So I'm going to encourage you to maybe expand or think about someone not coming from Stormwater Manager, and that's great, but also maybe someone from the Board of Health or some other organization that has a different focus on it.
But certainly, you certainly can propose the amendment, we'll change it. Yes. So you're thinking someone from the Board of Health and someone from a cycling committee?
Do we have a cycling committee that, or?
We have a rail trail.
Rail trail?
We have a group to come meet out to, certainly.
Board of Health makes sense, I think, because they started a few years ago, something you brought up there, Paul, was something that they had talked about, I think, even maybe at the end of my tenure. So yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense. So I think this is, I concur with what Ed is saying, it's a great idea, and it's on the minds of certainly state government, because when Karen Polito came to town a few weeks ago, I had the opportunity to sit down with a group of business owners and Karen, and a lot of the questions came my way, because they were asking very specific municipal questions. And she mentioned the Complete Streets program and thought Wakefield would be a wonderful fit for it, and even if, you know, I know we have several steps, but the fact that we are on her radar a little bit, I think helps now to take this next step, so makes perfect sense.
I was able to get on my bike tonight before the meeting for about half an hour, so I do know the pitfalls of, you know, bike riding in and around town. I am frightened to death to take my bike from Greenwood to the lake, just, you know, by virtue of going through the downtown area. That being said, it is a good program for the town, it's something we should definitely look into, but like what Ed mentioned, with everything else going on, let's just make sure we tie everything together, that we don't have one group outlining here and outlining that we all work together, whether it's the Main Street program or whatever. The Rail to Trail people, they're all, you know, a piece in this puzzle, because it's starting to form. Thank you.
So, Paul, just a question, is the Mass in Motion tied into the Complete Streets in some fashion to the Board of Health right now?
They've been a terrific help in putting this policy statement together.
No, I understand that.
They gave me a lot of background information.
Okay.
A lot of inspiration on this. Are you thinking, I don't know the longevity of the Mass in Motion program, but by adding someone from the Board of Health, I think we can probably get someone from Mass in Motion or someone else, if they're not around, to participate. So I consider Mass in Motion to be part of the Board of Health right now.
Right.
Just a quick comment. No, I think, Rick and Paul, the Complete Streets presentation was great. I mean, I think some people have already talked about it. Just the timing is great, and I think possibilities are wonderful. Just the initial cost to the town, though, I know we have this particular glance that are going to be available, maybe you mentioned four hundred thousand or so down the stretch. Initially, though, like the engineering cost, do we put some of that upfront then?
The fifty thousand creates a plan.
Okay.
And let's say you have five items in that plan, and you have, hey, we want to find out where we need handicap ramps that we don't have, or it could be putting in small sections of sidewalk. It could be a bunch of things you could come up with. That four hundred thousand is actually used for what's in that plan.
Okay.
Okay? After that, there is no grants that are existing right now, unless I'm missing one. So the cost, the cost of any improvements that come out of this policy that we wouldn't do now would be, the town would bear. Okay?
Okay.
So, unless something else. But it will help you when you go for a, if you went for a tip project, for one of those, it helps you with a tip project.
Okay, that's good.
You get more points.
You get more points.
Anyone have any further questions regarding the Complete Streets policy? If not, I will entertain a motion from the floor to adopt, approve the implementation of the policy.
With the amendment to add a member of the Board of Health.
And the possible pike?
Rail to Trails. Yes.
As amended, seconded?
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is the Human Rights Commission speaker series. Mr. Watts.
David Watts Jr., I'm Chair of the Human Rights Commission this year, and with me from the UU Church.
Janine Fabiano, and I'm with the Social Actions Committee, Unitarian University Church.
Welcome.
Thank you.
It has been part of the program of the WHRC this year to start partnering with local groups to further what we're trying to do with educating people in the importance of human rights as part of everyday life. We have, for instance, worked with WAVE when we've been at the farmer's market and other venues, sharing our table with them to help promote both groups. So a few months ago, the Social Actions Committee came to one of our meetings and started the ball rolling with coming together and doing a speaker series. So I'll let Janine talk about the speaker series itself.
Okay, so back at the Unitarian Church with the Social Actions Committee, and after the congregation, we had already started doing some work as a community, looking at racism in our local community, in our state, in our country, and also the parts that, how racism actually is more of a white problem than many of us even realize, and then as individuals, what we can do. We're looking at all of the ways that the white-dominated culture has been consciously and unconsciously creating systematic racism for generations. And so we really wanted to look at ways that we could share some of the stuff we had started to learn in our journey with the greater community, and ways that we can work together to start ending this cycle. So we have two people coming, and after our conversation, we met several times over the summer, we really wanted to set the stage about the problem we feel with the white-dominated culture, and introduce that concept to what is predominantly a white community here in Wakefield. And so the first speaker will be a man who is a Unitarian, who's done a lot of his own journey with racism, and he's involved with a lot of workshops, that he presents a lot of workshops, is always speaking on the subject. So he will be the first person that will be here on October fifth, and it'll be about understanding whiteness. The second person will, and his name is Ken Wagner. Did you pass him, please? No, you don't.
Yeah.
The second individual... The second individual, Martin Henson, and he is from Black Lives Matter Boston, a young activist, and he will be speaking on that subject here also on the 18th. So it's something that we are very passionate about and I think it's really a good opportunity to, to bring this subject to, to the population of Wakefield and beyond. We will be advertising it way beyond Wakefield also, so. So that's, that's what we have to share with.
Both will begin at 7:00 PM. They're both being held in the high school at the Savings Bank Theater. We're hoping that we will get a large turnout of Wakefield citizens, anyone from around in other communities as well. We'd like to also extend the invitation to the Selectmen and to the other town officials to also come and to participate. The anticipation is that there will be a talk and then there will be some breakouts so that people can then start to kind of absorb what they've heard that night and maybe kind of figure out ways to instill that in their own lives. So the hope is that we don't just preach to people, but that people actually start to use this information as part of the evening. The intention is that this will be the beginning of an annual series of talks, so we will plan two talks for next year on other subjects that have to do with human rights or race or anything, you know, that pertains there too. So with that, if there are any questions or comments, we'd love to hear them.
Would this be age appropriate for a 13-year-old?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, we'll actually be speaking to the school committee tomorrow night.
Yeah. I, I don't think that 13-year-olds are too young to hear this. I, I think that at that point, they should be hearing this. So it would be good to see some of the kids from the schools, hopefully there are some, I know there is a group in the school that promotes human rights and hopefully they will encourage students to come to this talk.
Thank you.
Well, Ken be talking about any implicit bias to his lecture? Do you know?
What do you mean?
The issue of implicit bias? So everyone's getting trained on implicit bias now. Police departments fire academia, which goes hand in hand on, I think, the way, the issue of whiteness. So, and I think it's a great for people to, to realize if they have biases that they might not even realize. So I just didn't know if that was part of his talk.
I'm imagining it is.
I'm guessing it would be.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. The, the idea behind this and actually the inspiration for this was a book by a local author called Waking Up White.
That's one of those, yeah.
That I know in writing, they've tried to get more and more people to read as part of a, a book club.
And actually, the, the author is actually coming to the Wakefield Library in, I think it's March. She's from, she grew up in Winchester. Did you get her name now? Irving.
Debbie Irving.
Debbie Irving grew up in Winchester, Massachusetts, and did her own kind of journey of understanding where she was falling short when she kept thinking she was not racist and she wasn't acting racist, but why was she not able to really connect with others beyond her own white race?
The, the intention is to open people's minds to.
Sure.
What's going on and the ideas, especially given some of the tragic events this year in Charlottesville and, and other places. People need to be more aware and the only way we're going to move forward is if they are more aware.
Thank you. I just want to say this is great. I actually have gone to events in Melrose that the Melrose Human Rights Commission with the UU Church has done.
Exactly.
So I think this is a great partnership and I'm glad you're bringing it to Wakefield. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Good luck.
We'll see you on the 5th and the 18th.
Okay.
Thank you. I think we have caught up with everything on the agenda prior to our next item. So our, our next item on the agenda right now is going to be the Board of Selectmen name change discussion. Before we do anything, I just would like Tom Mullen to clarify for the board again what the options are as we move forward in regards to this topic. I understand that there's a couple of various options out there, but I just want to make sure everyone knows what, what we can do and what we can't do. How's that?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mullen.
Mr. Chairman, let's begin by stipulating that the board could always by a vote decide that informally it wants to call itself whatever it wants. And that would work its way out in the way you refer to yourselves, in the way, say, press releases are issued, even in letterhead. But let's put that aside because the question comes to me, so I think the question is a legal one. How do we legally change the name of the Board of Selectmen? And the answer, it has to deal with the amendment of two sets of documents. One is our town charter, which is replete with references to the Board of Selectmen. And the other is our bylaws, likewise, replete with references. The bylaws can only be changed by town meeting. Two-thirds vote in the case of a zoning bylaw and I think there are few references to the selectmen in the zoning bylaws, I'm not sure. Majority vote in the case of the general bylaws and there are a lot of references to the selectmen in the general bylaws. But you wouldn't do that unless you first changed the charter because the charter is to us as the Constitution is to the United States and the bylaws are to us as the statutes passed by Congress are to the United States. So the bylaws have to be consistent with the charter, not the other way around. So the question is, how do we amend the charter? And there are basically three ways. One, we should rule out from the beginning. It's have a new charter commission. That takes years. It's, it costs thousands of dollars. It's only done in cases where major changes are contemplated, and I mean along the lines of going from a town to a city. Or going from an open town meeting form of government to a representative town meeting form of government. If we're going to do something more modest than that, then there are two ways that we can change the, the charter. One, which I don't think we've ever used before in Wakefield, though I also represent Linfield and we've used it there, is to go to town meeting and ask town meeting to pass by a majority vote, a request to the state legislature for special legislation, changing our charter. There's no law that says that the legislature has to require us to go back to the people and put that question to the voters at poll, at the polls, but as a practical matter, it's invariably the case. So the process would be, you go to town meeting, you seek a majority vote for special legislation to change the name of the board in our charter. That goes to Beacon Hill. They act on it and in all likelihood, they will, they will grant the request, but on the condition that we put it on the next annual election ballot. The method that we have used here in Wakefield repeatedly since our charter was adopted in 1998 is a little different. Rather than resorting to Beacon Hill, we have instead gone directly to town meeting and asked town meeting to approve a proposed change by a two-thirds vote. And if town meeting does so, then at the next annual election, the matter goes on the ballot. And if it is approved by a majority of those voting, then it becomes effective. Maybe I should pause there and ask you to raise questions.
So on my own on this one, so there are, there are mechanisms in play where it doesn't have to go through a, a suggestion given to the charter first and then to let them discuss it, then let them bring it before town meeting?
Okay, I think you're referring to the Charter Review Committee, which currently exists. John Carney is its chair.
Right.
Let me speak to that. Remember I mentioned that there's this cumbersome, years-long process called Charter Commission?
Mm-hmm.
That's not what that is. That's a Charter Review Committee and it is simply going to come up with, or it is charged with coming up with suggested amendments to the charter, which will be presented to town meeting in either of the two methods that I mentioned earlier. Okay? One possibility, if the board is interested in seeking town approval for a change in the name of the board, would be to proceed through that Charter Review Committee. However, bear in mind a couple of things. One, it's going to take a while. I have not heard that that committee is planning on submitting its proposed changes at the next town meeting. I would be very surprised if they were.
It's not.
Okay.
No, it's not.
Two, that committee, that committee's charge is primarily formal and ministerial as opposed to substantive. By that, I mean, we look to them to do things like suggest to town meeting that we remove a, any language from the charter, which was ill-considered. I, I can actually find, you know, grammatical mistakes in the charter. You wouldn't look to that committee to suggest major substantive changes if, for example, you know, you remember we used to have a Board of Public Works. It was abolished when the charter was passed. You wouldn't look to that committee to suggest that we go back to having a Board of Public Works, doing a lot of what your board currently does. That kind of substantive change is more the kind of thing that we'd expect from individuals on a petition or the Board of Selectmen themselves to suggest at town meeting. So you need not, and there are good reasons why you might well choose not, to wait for the Charter Review Committee to act if what you want to do is to hear from the townspeople about the name of the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Tom.
One question.
Tom.
Option number two, would that be a simple majority from town meeting before the special legislation change?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. If you, if what you're looking for is special legislation, you just get a simple majority vote from town meeting.
Thank you.
Tom, what were the examples? You said that we've done this since the charter came around in 1998. What were the, are there any examples you can think of that we've done?
Yeah. We had a raft of changes that basically dealt with the appointment power of the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator.
Any other comments? I know. Tom, are we done with the?
Yeah, that's my overview. I'm happy to try to answer any questions.
Okay. Ed?
Okay, if we have a discussion.
We just.
So I saw that this, this item was coming up on, on the agenda tonight, so I, I've done a lot of research into it. I've spoken with Attorney Mullen on this as well. And my takeaway, the last time this came up at our meeting in June, was that there was, there were two concerns, I understood them. One of them was with process and the other with expediency. And I think, and I was trying to think through, all right, how can we as a group address those concerns and come up with a solution that makes sense and moves the matter forward? And in speaking with Attorney Mullen, one thing that, that came up, came out of that discussion, and, and I asked him if this was, was an option and he indicated he saw no reason why, why it would not be, would be for us as a body to decide that this issue of a potential name change should not wait the normal process to go through the Charter Review process, which is, which is a lengthy one, and that is a concern for those looking for the expediency of the issue. And I respect that. But instead, how can we advance that issue yet preserve and respect the process to get there? Process being the town to have its voice in this decision. And in speaking with town council, it was clear that one, I think, very practical approach to addressing this issue in the near term is to, as a board, ask that it be on, before our town at town meeting this November. Then, we're talking less than two months from now, then the issues before the town, we have ample opportunity for people to discuss this issue before town meeting, for the town to be heard at town meeting. And if it is voted that this should appear on the ballot, then it would appear on the ballot come April of next year, which we're looking about what, seven, seven months or thereabouts. And I think that accomplishes something that any of the other talk that we've had previously doesn't. It engages the community in the process, but it also creates a finality to this issue. There's a potential right now where if as a board we, we decide or, or, you know, there's a decision from this board to temporarily change the name, it, it doesn't accomplish ultimately, I think, what, what those looking to change the name are, are looking to achieve. And that's, and that's the, the formality of it and, you know, a legally binding change. All that, all it does is just create a name that we've, that we've created. It's like the, you know, the, it, it doesn't, it doesn't achieve our objective, as we've talked about, of having town input and then determining, okay, is there a name change? And the name change, what should it be? So there's a potential that we could, as a body, decide on a name change tonight. Then perhaps town, at town meeting, it's decided, you know, there's, there's a motion and an amendment to the motion and then whatever name is chosen by this body, a different name is then proposed at town meeting and that name is carried forward onto the ballot. And then in April, say hypothetically, that name is then, then voted in, you know, by the voters. We could be known as the Board of Selectmen, whatever temporary, informal, non-permanent name we are known as through April, and then as of April 2018, this body is known as something different. That to me doesn't accomplish what I think we need to attempt to accomplish here. So I am strongly in favor of the idea of presenting this at the earliest possibility at town meeting in November, so that rather than us deciding tonight and walking out of here with some sort of, you know, hypothetical, because that's really all it is, it's a name that we can use, but it, it, it's a name only and it's not something that's going to be binding, let's bring it before town meeting. If, if those at town meeting, you know, want to put it on the ballot and presumably if, if there's great interest in changing the name, which some have indicated, others have not, but if there's that interest, that consensus, then we'll get it on the ballot and in April it'll be decided in a, in a permanent way. Then we ultimately leave the, you know, the, the final say in the hands of the people who should have it, the people of the town. Because, you know, we, we are the employees of the town, we, we work for, you know, the townspeople as a whole. It's, it's frankly no different than, you know, employees saying, we're going to change the name of the company. Well, I think the people that, that run the company should be the ones, you know, making that determination. That's why we have, you know, these town votes. And I, and I respect the, the fact that people have said they want to have it changed immediately. Let's move that along. Let's not wait two years to have this vote, but let's move it along and have it in a matter of, of months and I think we'll have this issue permanently settled, which I think would be a very positive thing for us. So that's, that's my perspective on it.
I agree with some of what you're saying. I, I don't agree with necessarily with throwing it to the public to vote because I think if we did that with the Voting Rights Act, gay marriage, a lot of other things, the popular vote would not have carried it. We, we went with legislative, with people who were in charge. That said, I, I understand what you're saying about the process. I hope we could come out with a name that we agree with, we present that name at town meeting. I don't want to, I'm not comfortable with having an article that says, let's change the name, and then having the discussion of the name. I think as a board, we can come up with a name that we think is appropriate and why can't that be the article? And if people disagree with us, they can, they can amend it, but I still think if we as a group say that a certain name we are proposing to be changed. changed, and we come out together as that, and we are cohesive and supportive of that name change, that makes me feel better about going through the process of going to town meeting, getting the two-thirds vote, and then putting it on the ballot.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Maybe this is a refinement I should have mentioned earlier. We'd have to do that.
Okay.
Okay? I mean, you can't go to town meeting with a blank in the article.
And I'm not suggesting that, but what I'm suggesting is, the decision as to whether the name should be changed should be before town meeting. I don't disagree that if the board were to offer up a suggested name, in the event you decide to change the name, this is what we're proposing as that name change.
Right.
And then, if someone wants to then, you know, file an amendment to that motion at town, by all means, do that. So, I'm not suggesting we're directionless in this, by any means, but I do think that, I think the process does matter.
But I hope that, as a board, we all support that it should be changed. I still want to go to that, or else, you know, let's explain to the 12, 13, and 14-year-old girls in the audience why we want, we are not in favor of having a gender-neutral name. I hope, as a board, we can be, seven of us.
I'm going to get to that in a second. Tom, go ahead.
I've seen, in the last couple of weeks, we've had discussions among ourselves, you know, the select board, the Board of Directors, town council, you know, town directors, we're not going to come out of here tonight with a name that we all can agree on.
We might, though. I don't know.
I highly doubt it, because I think we all have our own little, you know, what we should think we're called.
Yeah, but we could compromise. I mean, why not throw out some names? Town council, I think?
We have one.
Yeah, but let's teach people the difference between the word council and council. That would be like, you know, first grade lesson.
I'd be happy to have a discussion. I think there's nothing wrong with us having a discussion about potential names.
Right.
I do think that, ultimately, though, it's a decision that should be voted on. I mean, that's where process matters as well, and I think that it's, there's, we can achieve both objectives, of expediency, of resolution of this issue, and following a process that is in place, but on an expedited track, understanding the expediency.
Are you suggesting we put a name out there, though?
I'm sorry.
Are you suggesting we put a name?
My understanding from town council is that the board would have to suggest the name.
Right.
That's right.
Right. I have no issue with that. I'm not suggesting there's a problem with doing that. I do think, though, we have to make sure that we're just very clear that people have raised this as an issue. We want to move this issue forward before the town for resolution. As a body, we thought it was appropriate for us to present a name as an alternative, and then people can decide. And I suspect that there will probably be discussion about, you know, as there has been, I think, given informally of this board, if there were to be a new name, what is that new name?
Yeah.
And obviously, there'll be differences of opinion, and I think there's plenty of fine options.
Right. I just hope we can all, we can, the seven of us say.
Six.
Six? Why?
Well, six of them.
Right, but Charlie's four. Yeah. I count in.
I haven't heard from two members.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of comments on. I think that it is time for a change of names. I mean, just looking at Ann's little plaque over there with Selectmen, you know, it doesn't, it's still, it hasn't changed yet.
Because I don't have the thing.
Right, it changed in our written, but it hasn't changed on the plastic. I think it's time for a change. I think that the change part is already come, and I think that, I have to agree with, I mean, you both have comments, I like. The procedural part is really what I was tied into back on June 26. I think that the process is important. I think that the time has come, but I think it's still important to continue on with the town deciding ultimately what we should be called. I think we need to select a name. Hopefully, amongst us, there's a lot of choices. Hopefully, we can come up with one tonight amongst the six of us. As Tom said, we have to present that, as town council said, sorry, Tom. The name that should go on the town meeting is vapor. So, I don't think anyone really can argue we should keep this Board of Selectmen forever. But I think that it's just good to let the town decide ultimately with our direction. And I think that just a quick name change may not be appropriate, but I think ultimately, this is the right direction. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, so, I'm going to echo, I'm a believer in process as well. I think it's a good process that Town Council Mullin proposed, and I agree with what Peter says. I'm going to strengthen what you say a little bit, so I think what we recommend to the town at town meeting is indicative of how we, as elected officials in the town, think the town should be going. So, yes, it's up for the town, it'll get a two-thirds majority, but the seven of us, seven of us with Brian here in spirit, this is what we are recommending as town officials, as elected members, and this is what we are going to be advocating for at town meeting, and then, at the next election in April.
Thank you. So, I just want to clarify a couple of things before I ask for a couple of votes. Tom, so, right now, if a name comes out of this, and we say we're going to present to the town meeting, it's a simple majority at that point, correct?
Simple majority here at your board?
At town meeting.
It depends on how you want to proceed. If you want to proceed, as we always have in the past, when we've tried to amend the charter, it's a two-thirds vote, and it's all done locally, Beacon Hill's not involved. If you're content to send the matter to Beacon Hill and thereby lose some control as to timing and substance, then it's a majority vote.
So, we'll be seeking the two-thirds?
We always have in the past.
Okay, so, thank you.
Certainly, I don't think we want to add any burden of cost, like, the first one is definitely out of the question, the cost of the Charter Commission, new Charter Commission meeting, that's just crazy, so Tom was right on that part. So, I think that, expediency-wise, we won't have to wait, as Marion said, I think, June 26th, waiting until, like, November with a Charter Review that really isn't.
November of 2018.
2018.
Right.
Right, 2018, right, sure. A year and a half back then, but that wouldn't have, I mean, the cost, the delay, it just, it doesn't make any sense at all.
That's right.
So, I think three is the most, going with Tom's, one, two, three. I think the three seems the most apropos.
I agree that procedure is an important thing, and anything that this board does. And again, I agree also that we have to stop becoming a united board, and we have to go forward, making joint votes that are all in agreement, and that shows solidarity in the board, that we are going in the right direction. Not that it's going to happen at every moment, because everyone has their opinions on what to move forward with, or on any vote that they take. With this, though, what I'm hearing right now, I'm going to ask for two votes. The first vote I'm going to ask from the board is a motion that we are in agreement that we are going to move forward a name change for this board. Okay? At a potential November town meeting. So, we will, whatever, we're going to make a decision now to make a change on the name and present something on the floor of town meeting.
For November 27.
For November 2017.
I think the motion instead should be that the Board of Selectmen is asking, I believe, would, Tom, would it be asking for a warrant article, then? How was it formally presented?
One thing you might do is.
That'd be my second point.
One thing you might do is move to have me draft a warrant article seeking a name change that would not involve special legislation, and to present it to you at your next meeting. If you were to phrase it that way, that puts off for the time being, if you want to, the question just what that name should be. It's okay, from my perspective, if in the next week or two, I work on an article and I leave a blank there. It's at town meeting, of course, we can't have a blank there.
Okay, so, the question is, then, at this point now, do we want to let Tom draft the warrant article for us and consider what our options are for a name change, maybe unofficially, without, I don't know how we would do that, but we should have some, we can't do anything outside of a public hearing that we are having right now, so, it would have to be discussed now, or we bring it back on the 25th?
I don't see much of, I think everyone has been aware of this issue since June. I don't see much of a reason to have a two-week delay in determining what a proposed alternative name could be. I think everyone knows their position on that, and may be, you know, manageable to something else, but I don't think anyone's going to have great, other, great new suggestions in two weeks' time. I do think, though, that the motion should be such that it goes before town meeting as a warrant article, for the town, just for the town to determine whether it wants to move forward with adopting whatever name is proposed.
And then, hopefully, we can all stand up and support it. That's my hope. It's a beautiful hope I have, that we can all stand up and say.
We'll leave this room tonight in agreement of a name.
The seven of us support it.
So, Ed. Yes, Tony, go ahead.
I'm going to throw it out there, you know, Board of Directors, because it's something that is gender-neutral. I think it's something we can all agree to, and Brian brought up a great point as having that. You know, I think maybe town councilors may get a little confusing to people.
I would suggest town council. I think it's a very kind of standard way of identifying a governing body. City council is very commonly known. I think our town council could also easily be re-identified as our town attorney. I mean, there are plenty of other options, you know, potentially there, if there's any sort of confusion, the E versus the I, I understand it, but.
Someone who teaches, right, and I would say we keep it, just underscore that point.
And an S versus a C.
There's a lot of difference.
So, I got a lot of, as we all did, we've been talking about this since June, it's not a new issue, so we've all gotten a lot of emails. I'm just going to read one, I'll probably read two tonight, but one that I got from Karen Fowler, who we all know. She had a nice PS that addresses this issue.
Failer.
Failer, sorry. I personally support the term "town council," which is a familiar term and easy to say. Counselor does not trip people's tons. It is also a traditional term used in Boston and many other communities. It addresses most of the language questions discussed at the last meeting. Tom Mullin's role can be a spelling lesson, or just call him the town attorney.
Well, there you go.
Karen, very brave.
We think of a motion a lot of the time.
Peter?
Interesting. I too, like with Tony and Brian, like the Board of Directors. I know it sounds a lot of corporate lingo in there, but I, town council, councilors, I mean, that's up there, those are probably the top two. I have five in front of me that I'm not going to read, but the Board of Directors and town council seem to be my top two as well.
Well, I've had many discussions with Mr. Mayo over different names and what pros and cons. Board of Directors, initially, I was, I could have lived with that. I'm really 50/50 on the council. I could be called Board of Trustees. I could be called Town Administrators, wherein change the Town Administrator to Town Manager. I mean, you can make a few changes along the way that could accommodate being called Administrators, but Mr. Mayo pointed out whether or not we are really functioning as administrators. So, that's fine, but we could be considered Directors or Trustees to it. I mean, council, are we making the move to become a city at this point? I don't know. I just, for some reason, I know that people said, and then Steve likes the select board, but I just haven't been able to wrap myself around that one, maybe I'm too behind times, but, just those are my comments. I mean, ultimately, ultimately, as Ann says, whatever comes out of here, by whatever vote comes out of here, on the floor of town meeting, I will support that vote or that name. Okay? So, it's not going to be something that at town meeting, I'm going to say, I don't like it. So, if a four-to-vote or a five-to-one vote comes down, it doesn't make a difference. I will vote on the floor of town meeting for whatever the change is that's going forward. So, it's whatever we leave here, that's the mindset it's going to be. So, I do agree with you that we should all be of one mind going forward. So, with that being said, I'll lead the, a motion for one of the names to be considered for something to be moved forward.
I'd like to make a motion for the title of Board of Directors.
We have one motion for the Board of Directors. Do I have a second for the Board of Directors?
A second.
Second. Any further discussion on the Board of Directors?
My only discussion is if I like the other one better, I can live with that one, so I, you know, whatever happens at town meeting, I'm fine. I'm leaning more towards town council today, but none of them are that offensive to me other than town administrators.
That's all right, Paul.
I don't take any offense to it, but I'm thinking all different means, so, you know, you just.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to say that whatever happens.
Appreciate it. Anybody else having a comment as far as the choice for our Board of Directors? Hearing none. All in favor of moving forward with the name of Board of Directors? Say aye, or raise your hand.
Aye.
How is that going to go forward? Three-three. So, that goes down, because I didn't hear, you didn't raise, you didn't raise, he didn't raise. So, it went down, three-three. So, what is the next motion?
Well, if we're proposing a name to be considered at town meeting, I would propose town council.
So, now, we need to.
C-O-U-N-S-E-L.
Excellent.
Just kidding.
We have one, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Okay. So, now, is there any further discussion on that one? Hearing none. All in favor of council? One, two, three. I'm breaking the tie. Okay? Because we need to leave this room in a forward motion, so I'm not going to go to another motion. So, at this point in time, we're going to move forward with town council, and, Mr. Mullin, you will draft something for us for the 25th, for us to look at. Is there any other discussion on the matter of?
Can I ask one question? Just, don't go, you think it's going to be crazy? No. It's implicit that it's Tom to draft a warrant article for the name change that does not require special legislation and change the name to town council. That was understood by everybody?
Yes.
Wakefield Town Council? Do we have to put the Wakefield in there? Is that assumed?
No, the idea would be wherever Board of Selectmen now appears, it would be town council.
Okay, thank you.
That's good with everybody?
Sure. And we'll be known as councilors?
I assume so.
You're going to bring the black tape?
And what would the chair be known as?
Chair.
Chair.
Well, because there's a man on the end of the chair.
The chair.
Does it not?
The chair.
Chair can just be chair.
Chair or vice-chair.
No, I'm just saying right now.
Let's not analyze this too closely. It's the chair.
It's chair.
Okay. So, we're all set right now? Everybody okay?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
No, so, I just, I'm going to just read one more email, because I want to think all the selectmen in this room, we had three months of discussion on this, so, thank you. This is an email we also got, and I just want to read it. I thought Karen's email, Karen's lived in town for 40 years, so she is tradition and has lived here and is a part of, a vibrant part of this community, and this email came from someone who moved here recently and chose to move to Wakefield, as I and a lot of other people did. And I think it actually piggybacks really well off of the Human Rights Commission and what they're talking about, so I'm just going to read two sentences. "Representation matters. What our kids see and hear affects how the view of their world and what they think they can accomplish later in life. Just as I want my daughter and her two-year-old brother to know she can be a firefighter, doctor, or dentist, I also want her to know that if she wants to go into public service and run for the select board or town council, there is no built-in gender stereotype holding her back. Some things are tradition, while some things are progress. I firmly believe the issue falls into the latter." So, thank you, my fellow selectmen.
Very good. Thank you. So, with that being said, let us move on to the last, oh, no, the warrant review and signing by Mr. Longo.
Day-to-day bills, nothing out of the ordinary, lots of, you know, just day-to-day bills.
Thank you for that report, sir.
I got a warrant signed tomorrow.
I'm sure you do.
Sherry's got it on a regular schedule.
Yeah.
Next item on the agenda is matters not anticipated by the chairman within the 48 hours of the meeting. I'm going to start with my left, Marion. You want me to start with right?
I think you started with me the last two times.
Okay, you want me to go today? Okay, I'm going to start with Ed.
Thank you. I was throwing, I was expecting maybe.
He needs a minute.
We start in the middle sometimes.
September 11.
There was recently, something that came out of Boston Magazine recognizing. There, there was recently, something that came out of Boston Magazine recognizing ranking schools, school districts, and Wakefield finished 75. And I don't believe for a moment that we are 75 ultimately. And I think it's important, because I've heard from a lot of people in town about this, and it's, it's an important issue. And I know that Steve has reached out to Dr. Smith on this issue to understand it, you know, what her perspective is on that, and I'm interested to hear what the school committee had to say on that as well, because I think it's important, important for our taxpayers. We've made considerable investments in, in our, our school district in recent years, especially, and folks want to make sure that, that our children are getting the return on that investment. And I want to see us do better, and I believe we can and we need to do better to be competitive. And I don't know in what capacity the Board of Selectmen, you know, plays an integral role in doing that, but in whatever way we can do that, we need to do that, because we have to come together as a town to make sure that we're looking better. And I realize this is just, you know, one set of data, and I realize it's just one ranking, but it's still a ranking, and people see it, and we see it. And I, I think the taxpayers understandably expect more, as should all of us, and we need to do better. That's it.
Very good, thank you. Tony?
Sixteen years ago, on September 11th, I had an early morning flight to Baltimore. I flew over Manhattan at eight o'clock in the morning, landed safely in Baltimore about half an hour later, called my wife, which is something that I do every time I fly or travel. Everything was fine. Fifteen minutes later, I got a phone call from a coworker. Had I seen the news? And I had not. We just talked about work, figured it was just a crazy accident, and I went about away. Later on in the morning, by about 9:30, we knew what was going on. My 10 o'clock meeting lasted about five minutes. Luckily, I had a rental car, and I was able to just get on 95 North and head home. Somewhere about mid-New Jersey, I saw what was left of the World Trade Center. I saw the cloud. It's an image I'll never get out of my head. All I wanted to get home, see my wife, we'd been married for two years. I was doing 85, 90 miles an hour on 95, looped up around Manhattan because it was closed. I probably got home from Baltimore to Wakefield in about five and a half hours, and it's something people just never, ever forget what happened 16 years ago, because I had, flying over Manhattan, you know, you get the, you know, if you look to the left, you can see, you know, the voice from the pilot, if you look to the left, you can see a clear, beautiful, you know, vision of Manhattan, and it's something I had done probably 100 times before and just, you know, try to take a quick nap before my meeting. But other than that, you know... Peter?
Well, it's always easy to follow Tony, but that takes your breath away. I have to loosen my tie up. That's a tremendous story, and this is a tremendous day. So as the liaison to the school committee, I'm going to talk to Dr. Smith, too, about what Ed brought up. It is, it is a big factor. A lot of people move to town, as the number one reason is the school system, and a bunch of you folks here have already, members of the board have already gone to school here, and it certainly, I know, affects you right away. I'm sure you made calls to Steve to address the issue, because it probably was very disturbing, you know, if you went to school here as well. But also, living here, it should just be about the same amount of disturbing news. And I'm sure there are reasons, and I'm sure that they're, they'll be addressed with the school committee, and Kim Smith will lead the charge to get us, Dr. Smith will lead the charge getting us back on track, if we're off track to begin with. So I'll discuss that with, with her shortly as well. On a lighter note, the Dog Park, the 14th grand opening, will be September 23rd to take a little away from that humor there, very little humor. The 23rd at noon time in September to formally acknowledge all the work that the DPW put into putting the eight inches of mulch in, not just regular mulch like they have in Melrose, no offense to Melrose, but their mulch doesn't compact into a nice turf substance. And the Dog Park is beautiful. We have another bench coming from tonight's meeting, and there's two more benches we want to put in, so a total of four benches, which would be great. But the DPW's done a great job. Steve Mayo, our town administrator, has been instrumental in moving us forward, and he has ways to make people dance, and they did a great dance for this event. And the board, 10-6 voted for it, and, no, 10-12 voted for it, and 12-10 it opened originally, but there was a lot of work to be done. But the land was part of the town's land, and I think that's a wonderful thing, not having to have purchased any land to get that on Main Street. And I spoke with Ann just before the meeting, and 10 and 15 people were down there with their dogs, and everyone's having a great time. So the town just needs to try to get more people to come into town to use the Dog Park, hopefully, you know, the local residents, but also, it's a great meeting place for a lot of people, and I think it's a great asset to the town. It didn't cost very much. So thank you, Steve, for all your help on that. So September 23rd, noon time, second ribbon cutting, and I hope everyone can make it. I know Paul's going to go.
Come, Peter.
Thank you.
I would, I will be in Canada at a hockey tournament, September 23rd, so I will not be there, but I'll be there in spirit. You know, on a day when we're obviously thinking of first responders, I'm sure we all have poignant stories from 9/11, but also with what we've seen with the hurricanes in the past week. I just want to acknowledge Justin Mayo as being an incredible first responder down for Texas for Harvey. And I know that in talking with Steve, in hearing, you know, Jean's nervousness in the background, how, what a difficult experience that was for Justin, but how hard and how proud I am sure he made his family and Wakefield feel. So in thanking all the first responders, I do want to thank our son, Justin.
I want to echo what everyone said. Thank you for the moment of silence to start with. I was living in Washington, DC on 9/11, about three miles from the Pentagon, so have memories from that day as well. I'm going to mention, we have amazing nonprofits in our town, and they do great stuff, and so I'm just going to highlight some activities that are going on. People asked me to share. Congressman Barney Frank is coming to Wakefield on Wednesday, 7:30, at the Savings Bank Theater at the high school, open for everyone, so please come and join there. And then a little plug for the Wakefield Corals Society. If you are a singer, they're having auditions. They have a website, check them out, and go sing along with them.
Very good. She has a left, a right, too, for me.
Mr. Chairman, the name change issue, I know occasioned a lot of comment on social media. There's a lot to be said for the formal procedures we use, rather than letting things get decided on social media. In England, they, the Royal Navy needed a name for its new research vessel, and they agreed that they would let social media decide in a poll. And there is now a float on the Seven Seas, HMS Bodie McBoatface. I'm not making that up.
Okay. Thank you, Tom.
Just a couple of things. I want to congratulate the board on their vote and their discussion tonight. That was a great discussion and great to see the board doing what, as it should, maybe I should say the council, doing as it should. But a couple of things. Tomorrow night, there is a, MBTA is going to be holding a meeting in September, on September 12th, at the Reading Public Library. And basically, what's happening is that weekend service will be going away from September 23rd through December 2nd on our MBTA line. My question will be, I'm going to ask them if they will reduce our assessment for that day, for those days that they're not, that they're not servicing. I'm sure the answer will be met with a lot of enthusiasm. There will be bus service, but I think it's important that, important that the community know that, you know, and I think about a lot of these kids that go into Boston, that go into the, see the Bruins, or see the Celtics play, or what have you, and there'll be a lot more driving for parents and what have you, to and from Oak Grove. So I understand that things need to be done, but it is unfortunate that it is going to affect us in that way. Another item that's coming up is, and we do this every year with the schools, we mentioned the schools tonight, is that the eighth grade students are given the option to participate in a Mass Municipal Association project that says, "If I were elected leader of my community, I would make a difference by..." And then they write their essay on this. And I will tell you, we've done this with the school department for the last few years, and I will let you know when they invite me down to talk to the students about it. It is a fabulous, fabulous day, talking, hearing some of these ideas that these young children have. And we actually had a second place winner one year, then their, the essay was read at the MMA convention. So I'll let you know. It's really a great thing. I'm very grateful that the school department does continue to, to do it, because I think it means a lot to me personally, but I think it really means a lot to the kids, too. I think they really enjoy it.
Let me go, Steve.
I will, I'll let you all know, when you, when you know, yeah, when it's coming. On September 29th, there is a gala, speaking of our nonprofits. The Boys and Girls Club will hold their annual gala on September 29th. They probably haven't sent out formal invitations yet. If you are interested in going, let me know. It's at the Sheridan Colonial. It really is a great evening, and the stories of, that the young people tell on how important the Boys and Girls Club was to them in, in bringing them up, and, and going through tough parts of their life really makes a big, big difference. So Board of Selectmen has the option of having a table there, so please let me know if you're interested, and I will make sure that that happens. And that's it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Members of the board, I just have a few things that I'd like to bring up at tonight. I want to thank every part of this great town of ours for their efforts in helping the Festival Italia come off without a hitch. It was a fabulous event that day. Everything went well, there were no police reports, no fire reports, no emergencies that had to be had. Everybody enjoyed the day. I do want to make a, a note, though, and I want to recognize former Officer Richard Cass and Deputy Chief Calabrese for their outstanding work in reuniting a lost child with, with the mother. In less than 10 minutes, the child was back with the mother. They went into action, and 10 minutes later, you know, the baby, the child's smiling, and everything went back to normal. So kudos to both of them for a job well done. An item that I brought up, Steve, regarding the trash receptacles downtown, especially those in the block of the Dollar Store and the block of Brothers. We have two boarding houses in both blocks, and repeatedly, I have seen them come out of the building and put their trash into the barrels, overflowing the barrels. It shouldn't be done, it's not supposed to be done. The landlords know it, okay? It makes our streets look horrible. So I'm, I'm asking this board to consider doing one or two things. Either contacting the landlords and making them know that there will be something that we will do for, if they continue that practice, or I'm going to ask that the barrels be removed completely. There's no need for our streets to have books, black bags piled up against the, I mean, just walk down there on any given morning, it's loaded. They just throw their trash, they have a dumpster that they share behind Brothers for one building, but I don't think they have a dumpster behind the Dollar Tree now, because I don't think they're allowed to. So it's, it just makes our streets look, we're working so hard to make them look good, and then that happens. So I don't know how we can address it, whether or not we can send a letter off to the landlords in question and say, "Listen, cease and desist, you'll be fined." Can we fine, Tom, can we fine? Put a fine on something like that to the landlord for, for, for not having, that businesses aren't supposed to have, we don't pick up their trash, correct, on businesses?
That's right.
And the boarding house is, it's a mixed-use building, it has tenants and businesses below. So we don't pick up on that type of a building. So he's responsible for the removal of the trash, correct? So if that's the case, if they're not adhering to that, is there anything that we can do to the landlord? Or do we just remove the barrels?
Well, are you talking about barrels that are on the public way? That is...
Our trash barrels.
Public trash barrels.
Public, our trash barrels.
Let me, let me tell you what we are, what we are doing. We're actually, because the chairman had brought this up to me, we're actually going through the trash, finding out exactly who's been using it, and are going back and contacting landlords and the people, and it's not just residential. It is also businesses that are...
I wouldn't doubt it.
And then we'll be looking if we can find a way to find them. Yeah.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. Thank you. The last item that I have...
I'm not doing that personally.
No, 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 I didn't think you would.
You know those DPW guys that you talk so much about?
The last item that I have is also...
Mr. Chairman, just one more thing. One thing you can do, and I often say that we should do this in connection with people who don't seek permission from the Board of Selectmen to put things on the sidewalk, we can just take it. If something is left on the sidewalk of the town of Wakefield, it's abandoned property. Nobody has a right to leave it there. When you put out your barrels, you have a right to leave them there until they're, the trash is picked up, and a reasonable time passes after that, you have to bring it back in. If you choose to leave your barrels or anything else out on the sidewalk for an extended period of time, it's just an obstruction.
Right.
I think unfortunately, this is trash that they're leaving out there, so we are picking it up. They don't want it back.
Okay, I thought you were talking about trash barrels.
No, no, the trash barrels are ours.
They're using our trash barrels to throw theirs.
Ah, okay.
So I'm just kind of encouraged that we find a decision not to get rid of the trash barrels. That's a service that we provide. So let's, the people putting their personal trash or their business trash in it are breaking rules that we have. So we have, if you break rules, there's fines and there's fees associated with it. So the solution is not to get rid of trash receptors that we all use in the town.
I sent Mr. Mayo a nice picture of what was there one day, and it was like, "Really?" It's just, like, never mind.
What can happen, too, is that even if the barrels aren't there, they can just pile their trash just because it's convenient, and that's the problem, too. It's a whole, but I like someone going through the trash, finding out who did it, that's good. Plus, it's not us.
So the last item that I have is also on September 23rd, we are, by the approval of this board, the Walkability Campaign is gearing up to initiate and have its inaugural walk on the 23rd. We're hoping for a nine o'clock start time, that they will encourage people to go the extra mile after they walk around the lake and bring them that walk into the downtown area for an additional loop. So 5K walk will now turn into a 7K walk. So it's, it's, it's a good opportunity. As soon as we have a few more details, I plan on sending it out to this board, so they'll fully understand what we're doing, but it looks like there's a lot of support behind it, and it will encourage people to come into our downtown. So that's scheduled for September 23rd.
Is the nine o'clock, is that registration, or what's the nine o'clock?
We're going to try to have everybody pre-set up, so that all they have to do is come down and begin to walk at nine o'clock.
Well, and it sounds like if you could figure out a way to get them to walk to the Dog Park and be there at noon, then we're combining your two loves right there. So maybe we figure out a way to do it. Yeah, exactly. I mean, it's the same day, and it's walking, Dog Park's a little further than downtown, but maybe you guys can figure out a way to have people do it.
We get them a little further, right in Greenwood.
Oh, and the last thing I want to remind...
Bring them our way.
I want to remind everybody that Saturday, the 16th, at the Maricel Civic Center, the the health and fitness, health and wellness event by the Wakefield Lymphed Chamber of Commerce is being conducted between 10 and 2, if I'm not mistaken. So that's another opportunity to get out and see what is being offered by this town. So any further discussion from the floor? The ten motion then to adjourn.
Second motion to adjourn?
Second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much.